I'd like to call to order the meeting of the King George County School Board, regular meeting. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and for a moment of silence following that. And do we have anyone leading us in the pledge?
No, not at this time. Officially open the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a recognition by the American Heart Association, the Heart Association Full District Award.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very, very much for having me and inviting me this evening. I'm so very pleased to be here with you all tonight. My name is Marjorie Churchborne. I am the luckiest person in the whole world because I am the school engagement director for American Heart Association here in Virginia for King George County Schools. I started working for American Heart and American Stroke Association on July 13th, 2013, which means I just celebrated my 10-year anniversary as your very proud heart partner this summer. I couldn't be more grateful, honored, and proud to be your heart partner here in King George County Public Schools. The impact of our partnership has grown tremendously over these last 10 years. I've been so grateful to have met so many of our incredible, hard-working, physical education and health teachers, nurses, classroom teachers, administrators, counselors, and all different types of staff here in King George who share our passion for teaching how to live longer, healthier, happier lives. This summer, I was also so excited to visit with Dr. Jesse Boyd, our superintendent, and Cheryl Bushrod, his executive assistant. They are an amazing team. All of my district heart partners here have really championed the importance of the impact of bringing our free life-saving heart challenge programs to our schools. Every school in our great district includes our life-saving family engagement and community service heart challenge program in their school each year, which teaches our students, staff, and families the warning signs of stroke, the steps to hands-only CPR, and gives them the tools to then share them with others. It is vital to learn these and relearn these every single year to eliminate hesitation and build confidence to act. Cardiac arrest can happen to anyone at any time, and when it comes to stroke and cardiac arrest, literally seconds count. Sharing these programs in our schools can and has saved lives. We call our schools who host these free programs "heart partner schools" and the leaders who host them "heart heroes," and that's exactly what they are. This past year, yet again, every single King George County School leader said yes to helping to save lives, and that is something to celebrate. You are a district full of heart heroes. I just wanted to share a few quick stats with you that I'm so excited to tell you. Since every school participated, we had the most students choose a heart-healthy challenge for their own hearts than ever before. About 430 students here in King George joined their own school's team to choose a heart-healthy challenge for their own hearts and health. And over 80 of our families here in King George completed what we call Finn's Mission to learn the warning signs of stroke, the steps to hands-only CPR, and they helped us share them with others. And thanks to these families who chose to donate also to the mission of American Heart Association to help research and education, to help fight heart disease and stroke, I'm excited to share with you. With the help of our heart partner company, US Games, we were able to give back to King George County Schools about $1,500 to purchase new equipment and wellness supplies to help students, staff, and families live heart-healthy. Our goal is to try and double that next year, and I'll do everything I can to help do that. This next year, our staff will be able to join our heart challenge teams as well for their physical and mental wellness, as it is so important to. A huge thank you to all of my school heart partners, Mr. David Baker, Ms. Lisa Tate, Ms. Amanda Step, Mrs. Jen Archibald, TJ Schaefer, Heather Mims, and Jen Tonetti. I'd also like to share that we had two schools in King George join my territory's top 25 partner schools this year. Thanks to the leadership of Principal Dr. Melinda Brown and Principal Sandy Eli and the lead volunteer hosts in their schools, Ms. Heather Mims at Potomac and Ms. Genton Eddie at Sealston, both Potomac and Sealston joined the top 25 this year. And Principal Brown's principal challenge that she took with me even helped their school get the highest percentage of participation in my entire territory, with over 50 of her students choosing a heart-healthy challenge with their families. A huge, huge thank you to these principals. A huge thank you to Dr. Boyd, King George County administrators, volunteers, and families for helping us turn bystanders into lifesavers. So I did bring a special award, and I hope that you will allow me to present them to you. I know Dr. Brown wasn't able to be here, but Mrs. Eli was, and I'm grateful for that. I'm grateful to both of them. Dr. Boyd, I also have something to present to you. I'm very thrilled to present you with our Heart of Gold School District Award for King George County Schools with American Heart Association. Thank you all.
Thank you. Yeah, hold on just a minute there. Yeah. Go ahead. There might be some questions afterwards, too. Well, thank you so much. There may be some questions, yeah. Why don't you stand back at the podium, there may be some questions. And there may not be. First of all, I want to say what a wonderful blessing it is to have somebody like you that is willing to take the lead in something that's so important, especially when I think about two elementary schools getting so involved at such a high level. You're a, you bring honor to your, to your schools, to this whole school division, and to King George County. So God bless you and thank you.
That means so much to you. It really does mean so much. Thank you.
Well, hold on, questions maybe? Anybody? Or comments?
I'm really glad you're doing this in school, because I do, you're absolutely right with CPR and strokes, seconds do matter, so it's a great thing for kids to know about.
It sure is, yes, thank you. We, we actually have recently found out, you know, just, you know, we, the majority of our board of directors are, you know, top cardiologists in the country, and they study this stuff, and they've realized that students even as young as four years old can help out in the chain of survival by, at that age, recognizing signs, and they can alert family members, and it has saved lives. And so that's why it's so important to start early with them and keep it fresh in their heads every year. And you guys, having schools as our partners, it helps us reach entire communities if they're willing to engage in it, and so we can't do it without you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Anybody else want to make a comment?
I'll just add, so my children attend Potomac, and I hear about Heart, the Heart Hero Challenge every year. I have, they have been observed conducting CPR in the living room on stuffed animals. So keep up the awesome work.
Oh, bless you. Thank you so much. I love hearing that. I love the stuffed animals. It's perfect, perfect way to start them young. Great idea. Thank you. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. Sure. All right, public or employee comment? Do we have some? Okay, while she's passing that down, if you wish to speak at a public employee comment, please see the click, which you've already done. Thank you. In order to, for time, we ask that you be recognized by me, which of course we'll call your name in a moment, and that you identify yourself by your name, state the relationship to the school division, staff member, student, parent, community member, et cetera, and indicate in which magisterial district you reside. And please remember that your comments will be limited to three minutes. I don't think we have a clock, so I'll just, okay, he has a clock, so he'll let us know. All right, the first one is Anthony Stats.
Good evening, Board, Board members. My name's Anthony Stats, live at 9007 Clara Street. I'm a former student. I live in the Shiloh District. My comments today are about my previous comments to the Board the last time I spoke, which is about mandating community service requirements to graduate for King George County Schools. And I want to throw some raw data at you, so I'll go a little slow. I'm a fast talker, so it's a challenge for me. We'll start at the District of Columbia, which in 1990, the District of Columbia had a graduation rate of only 54%. That year, well, in two years, in 1992, the district required 100 hours of community service to graduate. This increased the graduation rate in the District of Columbia to 60%, almost a 10% increase. It now stands at about 75%. Jumping to our neighbors in Maryland, the graduation rate there in 1990 was about 77%. In 1993, they required a community service hours of about 75%, but it didn't go into effect until 1997. They saw their schools increase to graduation rates over almost 80% in just a short while. Now, in last year, it was at 86%. Looking at more locally at Fairfax County, Fairfax does not mandate community service hours, but they do incentivize it by having a program where if students require, if students have 40 hours of service, of community service, that they get a court to wear a graduation. I think this is so important for King George County Schools. I think we've seen since COVID that schools are having a behavioral issue. I think that's very evident, and I think that we need to start getting our kids involved in our schools, not only just after-school activities, but actually involved in our communities. And I think once we're able to do that, I think kids will realize, holy manoly, our county is great, we have so many good programs, we have Love Thy Neighbor, we have all these different types of programs that if they tapped, or there's such an untapped potential, and I've talked to the president of Love Thy Neighbor, and he is just earring at the opportunity to have so many volunteers. I've talked to other people of starting a soup kitchen for kids who cannot attend, you know, can't travel, maybe holding that after school. And just one little thing that has always stuck with me, I got this in middle school. I was caught being respectful, accountable, and productive, and it's something I've always kept on to as a reminder of my time in middle school. And I think these little things, you know, impact kids way more than people realize they do, and I hope that the, you know, the Board really looks into this program in the next coming years. There's a lot of other things the next couple of months I'll be presenting to the Board. One of my really next big ideas is having a 12th grade mentorship program with ninth graders and having them, you know, the transition to high school, especially nowadays, is such a scary time for ninth graders, and having a 12th grader to look up to that will count for community service hours if this is passed would be such a great program, and I thank the Board for their time.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody online? All right, that's it. Okay, let's move on. Next on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Does anybody have any changes? All right, we'll move on to consent agenda, and the, the consent agenda is going to only involve the minutes from May the 8th and May the 24th, and the action items, there's another something we have to deal with in just a moment. But first, let's talk about the minutes for May the 8th. Do I have any discussion or concerns about those minutes? You all had a chance to look through them briefly? All right, something I realize that we do sometimes, and that is sometimes we do all these together, sometimes we do them separately, you know, to save time, but I guess something happened in the last meeting or two, which we'll talk about in a moment, that there's some advantages to approving them separately. But we'll go ahead and look at the next one, May the 24th. Do I have any concerns about that one, the minutes for May 24th? All right, well, for this one, then, we will do them together. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of May the 8th and May the 24th?
I move that we approve minutes from the May 8th and May 24th, regular meetings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion anymore? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote is unanimous. The motion is approved, and the minutes have been approved. All right, action item. We have a little bit of an issue, you probably saw it in your board packet, and that is the special meeting on April the 12th. If you look down at the bottom, I'll give you a chance if you have to look at that, I don't know if you saw that, but the special meeting on May the 12th, at the bottom, the top is fine, it has everything, and of course, the minutes were okay, but then at the very bottom, it listed Carrie Gonzalez as the chairwoman instead of me, and it wasn't caught by anybody, but eventually it was. So that has to change, and the problem was, just as I mentioned a moment ago, is we asked about all of those, but we still approved them together. So a little bit of housekeeping here, the first thing that I have to do is I will make a motion to rescind the consent agenda for March 27th, April 3rd, April 6th, April 12th, special meeting, April 12th, regular meeting, April 26th, regular meeting. We'll do that one, the motion to rescind that, seconded, and then we'll vote on it. And then I will make a motion, unless there's a discussion about it, I'll make a motion to approve the amended minutes, particularly for April the 12th, the special meeting, but it will have to include all those minutes because we approved all those together. Is that making sense? Any questions before I continue with this process?
Mr. Bush, I am not prepared to approve the April 12th special meeting minutes, really, we need to have some corrections in addition to what you have there. Just describe that right now. So I prefer just to pull that and discuss.
Okay, then, and that is the one that we had to change, it was a special meeting, and that's the one that you want to talk about?
Yes.
All right, let's do this, then, we'll have to separate that one out again, which is where the problem was, but then at least for the other meetings in the consent agenda, let's, or the action item we have to do, let me rescind all of those, including the April 12th one, and then I will make a motion to approve all of them, except the special meeting on April the 12th, and then we'll discuss that one. Does that sound okay with everyone?
Can we just rescind the special meeting from April 12th?
Well, the problem, Mr. Rolls, is that we approved all those together, so I need to rescind that, and then I will approve all of them except the April the 12th special meeting. Does that make sense? All right, I make a motion that we rescind the motion approving all the minutes on the consent agenda for May 24, 2023, to include March 27th, April the 3rd, April the 6th, April the 12th, special meeting, April the 12th, regular meeting, and April 26th. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, a second by Mr. Rolls, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries to rescind those. All right, now, I make a motion to approve the following minutes, March the 27th, regular meeting, April the 3rd, reg, special meeting, April 6th, joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, April 12th, regular meeting, and April 26th, regular meeting. I'm leaving out the special meeting. Do I have, who seconded it? Ms. Gonzalez seconded it. Do I have any discussion about that? Again, we're leaving out that one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, now, Mr. Rolls, special meeting, April the 12th.
So I just noticed, looking at this, it was a special meeting for student hearing, and the minutes basically only record that there was a motion to go into closed session and a motion to return to open session, which would mean that, well, just according to the Freedom of Information Act, if you're going to approve any kind of action, it has to be done publicly, so these minutes are only valid if you went to the student hearing and didn't take any disciplinary action. If you took any, approved any disciplinary action, then this is not adequate because there was no vote on that, and that has to, I know there's further concerns and maybe have differences of opinion on that, but at a minimum, it needs to be something in here that says we voted to, took a vote on whether to approve the discussed disciplinary action from closed session.
I talked about that with Dr. Boyd, and then also I did quite a bit of research, but I'll let Dr. Boyd respond to that.
Well, I think both you and I also spoke with our attorney, Brad King, and he did say that when we went into closed session, we really didn't even have to have meeting minutes at all. In fact, we could just go into closed session, show that we went into closed session, and then return from closed session without any minutes of what occurred through closed session. So that's kind of the, you know, that's the practice and policy that we had followed up to that point. What would you suggest would be different than that?
Well, based on my discussion with Elizabeth Ewing, the attorney from ESBA this afternoon, it's true, you don't have to keep closed session minutes, but you have to have a decision, even if you have closed session minutes, you have to have a public decision for something to take effect. I mean, just like when we go into closed session for personnel matters and we present hirings, promotions, retirements, we have a public record there, we have a record we have there, but that's not approved until we vote on it publicly. We don't say any specifics publicly, but we say we moved to approve the personal actions. So we would have to do something similar here, just to say we approved the disciplinary action discussed, and we would have the record that the chair wrote down by hand as the official document that says what that was.
So I think we've fleshed this conversation out a little bit in the past and talked a little bit about concerns with privacy, just so that we continue to keep that as a consideration. You're saying that the minutes should be amended just to say that a, that a decision was made, period?
Well, I mean, Freedom of Information Act would require that you state what the motion was, and if we want, in the interest of privacy, you could make it a pretty general statement that, yes, that we're approving the discussed disciplinary action, but then you have to record the vote, so you'll see if there are dissenters as well, but also be another part of it.
Can you give me an example of a, of a motion that should have been recorded in minutes so that I can take that back to my staff?
Yes, I say, move that the disciplinary action discussed in closed session be enforced, or something along those lines, and then you take a vote and you say there's three yays, two nays, record who voted and how they voted.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
Mr. Chair, I have grave concerns about doing changes because of your one conversation or the conversations that you have had. I've been attending discipline hearings for the past 25 years with King George County Schools, and they have been all in closed session, and the meeting, the minutes have been recorded as they were, that we came out of session and said a code number and something was decided, and that was recorded for those minutes. I don't know that we're doing anything different at this point that would require change. I don't understand why you want the change.
Yeah, can I say something? It almost sounds, Mr. Rolls, as though you'd like us, the paper that we read in closed session, you know, describing who it was, what happened, and the consequences, you know, is all written out by the chair as we discussed it. Are you saying you would like that, obviously no names or anything, you would like that almost to be read just with a number? Is that what you're saying, or?
That's what I liked, would like, but we voted otherwise earlier, so I'm not trying to change it right now, but I'm saying right now, these minutes are not compliant with FOIA, so at least needs to be, do that, so you can put in a vague statement there if you want to follow the further things that we were discussing before.
Well, I appreciate that you did speak with one of the lawyers. Dr. Boyd and I also spoke, and, you know, we are following the procedures, I can understand there's some differences of opinion, even legally, I guess, but I don't mind considering making a minor change. I don't know if we should do that with a past meeting, though. Let's, if you don't mind, we can do some more research on this, I know, but let's maybe even have all of us talk to a lawyer, possibly. I know.
That's what we need, is five different lawyer opinions.
Yeah, I, but I'm trying to be respectful, Ms. Hawk. Yes, Ms. Gonzalez?
Mr. Chair, may I ask, since this has been a somewhat repeated conversation in numerous meetings, what if we took a consensus poll of the board to determine if the majority of the board feels that this deserves further discussion, or if the majority of the board is content with the previous recommendation collected and communicated based on legal counsel to move forward as we are?
Do I have a motion in that regard?
Well, I think you could take a consensus, just to...
Well, I think there might be some discussion with some other board members. So any other board members concerned with that?
Well, I don't think Mr. Rolls is asking to reveal any information that's going to be harmful to anyone. He just wants, basically, it noted that an action was taken, so when we take personnel action, we come back and we say, you know, we voted on whatever personnel action. It's just a statement that we did something. Am I right, Mr. Rolls?
That's correct, and I also like to respond to Ms. Hawk's statement that we should have all talked to a lawyer, and yes, that was my position upfront, that it wasn't good for any one of us to talk to a lawyer to figure this out. We should have all talked to a lawyer about these topics and been much more, I think, incites to have done that and been down with it. But yes, that, that's right, Ms. Hoover, that's all I'm asking for at this point. I'm not trying to go back to my, where I was arguing before, to have more transparency, just the fact that this isn't compliant with FOIA, and Elizabeth Ewing confirmed that today. We can't basically have a meeting minutes saying that we opened a meeting and we closed a meeting, we didn't accomplish anything in between. So for the division, take action, disciplinary action against the student, that requires a school board action, it needs to show that we voted on that discipline, and it was approved by the majority of the board. Without that, this meeting accomplished nothing. Official.
But if your general statement is going to say nothing, nothing specific, how does that provide transparency?
Well, it would at least, well, there's, the official record would be what the chair wrote out in the meeting, and at least there's some indication of, you know, who voted for it, who voted against. But I agree, it's not the level of transparency I like to see. I like us to go back to what we had, at least what we had before, and you're right, you're asking what changed, and what changed is that until earlier this year, we would always publish the punishment that we handed out, and now we're not even doing that, so it's a level of transparency below what's acceptable to me.
Okay, in order to move on with this, I think everybody has been, been able to make a comment. It sounds like, how would the board feel? I'd like to give to your comments as to whether you think we should continue as we're doing it now without making any changes, or give a very specific recommendation about a change that can be made, one of those two, start with Ms. Gonzalez.
So I don't think, I think adding a sentence that says something along the lines of the, or, you know, whatever, the, we, you know, the motion was approved to, I don't know, the words are failing me, but we approved a disciplinary action as discussed. I don't think that really adds a lot of transparency, but I don't think it does any harm. So in the spirit of not wasting further time on this discussion, I'm all for making that simple change going forward. I do want to add, I do not think the five of us seeking independent legal counsel is at all appropriate. We have voted as a board to have legal counsel to provide us with opinions as necessary, and so if there is legal counsel necessary, I don't, I think the five of us would be reaching out to probably the same lawyer, and I don't know that that serves much purpose other than cost the division money to pay said lawyer's time. So I think we need...
Until earlier this year, we would always publish the punishment, uh, that we, uh, handed out. And now we're not even doing that. So it's a level of transparency below what's acceptable to me.
Okay, in order to move on with this, I think everybody has been, uh, been able to make a comment. It sounds like, um, how would the board feel? I'd like to give to your comments as to whether you think we should continue as we are doing it now without making any changes. Or give a very specific recommendation about a change that can be made. One of those two. Start with Ms. Gonzalez.
Um, so I don't think, I think adding a sentence that says something along the lines of the, or, you know, whatever the, uh. We, you know, the, a motion was approved to, uh. I don't know, the words are failing me. But we approved a disciplinary action as discussed. I don't think that really adds a lot of transparency, but I don't think it does any harm. So in the spirit of not wasting further time on this discussion, I'm all for. Making that simple change going forward. Um, I do want to add, I do not think the five of us seeking independent legal counsel is at all appropriate. We have voted as a board to have legal counsel to provide us with. Opinions as necessary. And so if there is legal counsel necessary. I don't, I think the five of us would be reaching out to probably the same lawyer, and I don't know that that serves much purpose other than cost the division money to pay said lawyer's time. Um, so I think we need legal counsel that needs to be decided upon as a board or so forth. Um, but I don't think reaching out five is prudent.
So can I, if I understand you, moving forward, you're fine with that brief sentence that says something along the lines of, um, we have. Discussed on this particular situation and the board approved whatever wording we do, that one sentence added, you don't see any harm to that.
Sure, just like we do personnel, say. We approved disciplinary action as discussed.
As, as discussed.
Whatever, certainly.
Ms. Hawk?
I think that's a very slippery slope. I'm extremely protective of student and family confidentiality. That is, that, that is the most important thing along with student safety, that we can guarantee our students. The student and family are involved with the situation before the board. Um. I think in any. Area, but certainly in a very small county, information travels very easily and very quickly. Um, I. Do not think, I think that our reaching out to different attorneys, uh, spends money that I would much rather spend on teacher and, uh. Staff support and salary improvements. Um, I, I think. This is a. I'm sure there's a, there's a old fashioned phrase for. Something that makes no sense, but at, at any rate, I. Agree with Ms. Gonzalez that a statement like that would. Be appropriate, but any, any specific reference to a student or family or the date should not be included.
Ms. Hoover?
I think that a general statement, just saying that we met and agreed upon an action would, would not be harmful. We're not giving any details. We just are saying that we took an action.
Mr. Rolls?
Okay, so I'll just respond as a couple of things that are said is that. Again, uh, never suggest that we should all individually meet with our lawyer, because obviously that would be, that'd make no sense. What should have happened at the beginning is that we should all met with the lawyer and had a discussion together, one discussion, and been done with it. Um, and I, so, agree, yeah, exactly like I've said, we just should have a statement just like when we approved personnel. That's all I'm asking for. So I'm glad that we agree on that. And I think, so I hear the. Concerns about privacy, I. Sure, the same, we also think about transparency. And so the suggestion saying that we absolutely shouldn't mention any student names, of course, no one ever say anything different. That's a strong man argument. So I think we all agree.
Okay, it sounds like I have four, yes, Ms. Gonzalez, last comment.
Certainly, I just have one question. I'd like to ask Dr. Boyd how he feels on the matter.
Say that again.
I'm, I would like to hear your opinion on including a statement that would be similar in generic form to our personnel action from closed session.
So at this point, I, I certainly don't mind checking, uh, with, with Mr. King on FOIA compliance, privacy issues. Uh, and, and really just a broad statement, what I've written down is, uh, an, an action that was taken by the board. We, the board, approved the disciplinary action as discussed. I think if it remains as general as that, then, um. Hopefully, as I understand it, that would meet our FOIA compliance, uh, according to Mr. Rolls, and it would also, uh, help guard the privacy of, of, uh, the students involved. So I, I think. Uh, if it's that, one additional sentence, I, I don't know quite what that adds to the process, but I, I certainly think it's, uh, something that, uh. We, we can manage.
Okay, um, I want to make this, finish this, but there are three things really. One is. What we're discussing really doesn't have anything to do with the April twelfth special meeting. It has to do with us moving forward. So let's deal with that one first, okay? All right, so I need, um, we, there was a change made from, because they have a stake was made, it had Kerry Gonzalez as the chairwoman, it needs to be changed to David Bush is the chair, chairman, chairman. So, um, can we, do I have a motion to approve the amended minutes for April the twelfth?
I move that you approve the amended minutes for April twelve.
Can I ask for clarification? Did we approve all the other ones?
Yes, we did.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Remember, I separated them out. I took this one out.
I, I didn't recall that we re-approved them.
Yeah, we did, we did. Unless I'm remiss.
You didn't.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. All right, um, so you made a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
Any just further discussion?
I'll just state again, so the point here was that these aren't FOIA compliant minutes. So I won't be voting for them because they don't state that any action was taken. When there, I mean, I think you're not saying that you didn't discipline a student. You did, right? And we just didn't record it.
All right, um, we'll take a vote on this. Um, if you're in favor of this, you say aye. If you're not, say nay. Ms. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we going to discuss future?
This is just this April twelfth. That's all we're, then we're going to have it, another possible motion for future.
Okay.
Special meetings. So this is just for the April twelfth.
Okay, I, I agree then.
So aye?
Yes.
Mr. Rolls?
Nay.
And chair votes aye. Motion carries four to one. For approving the minutes for April the twelfth. All right, now, moving forward, um, that one sentence that's added in there, um, my reading quite a bit about this does not look like that would violate any. FOIA or any concerns. So, um, do I have, would you read, I like the way you stated that, Dr. Boyd, would you read that sentence?
Uh, as I wrote it, uh, the board approved disciplinary actions as discussed. So an, an action was taken by the board. We approved disciplinary actions as discussed.
So the, the, so the idea is that we would add that sentence. Um, I, we've discussed that a lot. We'll discuss it more, but can I have a motion that we would add that sentence?
I move that we add the sentence as dictated by Dr. Boyd.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been seconded. Now discussion, Mr. Rolls.
Okay, well, we need to. Follow the Freedom of Information Act. It's not just saying that sentence. You have to record all the motions verbatim and the vote that proceeded from that motion. So that's what we need. And that's, that's the law.
What now?
Whatever motion is made in public session to enact the, uh, discipline. We have to take that down verbatim, and then we have to record the vote, who, who voted how on it.
But these are not public sessions.
Hold on, one at a time. Okay, I hear you. Uh, any comments now, Ms., that's all right, Ms. Hawk, go ahead.
What we are recording is that we met in a closed session. That is what is recorded. And, and I, I truly, I'm not able to debate your FOIA thinking, but, but I don't think you are correct about this FOIA interpretation. At any rate, what we are reporting in the minutes is that we met in closed session, and then. We don't report from a closed session of any sort who made what decision. That's inappropriate. And so all we are doing is reporting that we met, we went into closed session, and we came out of closed session.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Mr. Chair, um, perhaps a happy medium would be to revise how we approve our motion in public. Session following disciplinary hearings, much as we approve personnel is presented. Um, in this, we just say we approve personnel is presented, which is what we do in closed session. We could revisit our process and instead of reading. Um, the motion sheet that we have that has specifics about. Dates and so on and so forth, that could be revised, that could be delivered to the student in the discipline during closed session in the hearing, and then we revisit our terminology to say. Approve the disciplinary, the outcome of a disciplinary hearing as discussed, so moved.
Which, we already added that sentence, didn't we?
I mean, in, after.
Oh, in closed session, I'm sorry.
In the open session following disciplinary hearings, to make it more aligned with the way we handle personnel in these meetings.
I see what you're saying. Okay, so rather than.
And then it would protect hip, it would protect all privacy, and it would meet FOIA concerns.
Okay, any further discussion?
I think, uh, Mrs. Gonzalez's spot on there, but I will add, since Dr. Boyd mentioned talk to the lawyer, that if anybody talks to the lawyer about this anymore, I think we should all talk to the lawyer together.
I agree, I agree with that. All right.
So I'm sorry, I, I need to clarify. Mr. Mr. Rolls, did you say we should each talk to the same lawyer, or that we should talk to different lawyers? And so this is costing the county at least an hour of five conversations. Is this where you want to spend your budget on?
No, I wanted to do this right the first time, and that's what we should do going forward. I'll talk to the lawyer, and then we wouldn't spend this kind of time on it.
I think we were doing it correctly.
I, I think he has a point in that, um, sometimes phone calls have been made in the past. Where individuals, um, have called the lawyer and, uh, a lawyer and gotten some, um, information. And I think that we're all in agreement, and from now on, we will do that as a board, and if it is a FOIA concern, we'll do it in closed session. That. Is that agreeable?
Do what in closed session, talk to a lawyer?
That we would talk as a group, not individually, Ms. Hawk. I think that's what we're saying. It would not be an individual conversation. It would be, uh, if we have any discussion with the lawyer, it won't be an individual conversation. It will be, um, in, together with all five of us in closed session if it, uh, if it's a FOIA concern.
Frankly, I, I think we're starting to micromanage. I think Dr. Boyd should be our point of contact with the legal officer, and he reports back to us, and then we manage it.
No, I, I think, well. Dr. Boyd, obviously, he has a budget for that, Ms. Hawk, and I think there's no problem with that at all. We're not talking about Dr. Boyd. We're talking about that if any one of us has a concern. Then, um, and we want to talk to a lawyer, um, then we'll do it as a board together. That's all. But, Dr. Boyd, you obviously can continue. You have a budget to be able to call the lawyer. We want you to continue to do that. Unless the board has a problem. All right, let's move on now. We've had a motion, and it's been seconded to, um, add that sentence. Any other comments? Read the sentence one more time.
Didn't we amend it? Did, did we, okay, so it's the same, okay. Uh, so.
Did you want to amend the motion?
I did, um, I didn't want to amend the motion. I understood that Mr. Rolls wanted it to be done differently, and I offered a compromise for the process going forward. Which is to change how we, how we approve the outcome of the disciplinary hearing, which is different than the motion on the table.
Right, so, um.
Mr. Chair, I move to postpone this discussion till next meeting so we can have it more fully.
Okay, hold on a minute. Ms. Hawk made the motion, I believe. Is that correct? Who made the motion?
It was seconded and we were discussing it.
And it was seconded, we were in the process of discussing it. Um, so now there's been a possibility that, um, that motion would be rescinded and, um, a new motion made, but.
I, I think the motion could be modified without rescinding. Um, I think our statements were close enough that I could, I could take Ms. Gonzalez's words and, uh, and, but, um. Read, can you read the motion back to us? What a waste of time. Could you read the motion back to us?
I'll be honest with you, I missed the first sentence. The board, I have a blank, and then I have the board approved disciplinary action as discussed. So I'm, I'm missing the action in that first sentence of the motion.
So I think it was an action was taken by the board. We, the board, dis, uh, approved disciplinary action as discussed. And then I think Ms. Gonzalez amended the mo, make it more.
Parallel. So I would make it more succinct. Um, we come out of closed session on a regular basis, and we say, I, I move to approve personnel is presented. We could change it to say. We move to approve the disciplinary actions as discussed.
Using the same wording we do with personnel?
Essentially, yes. And I think that's combining without going through the rescinding.
Okay, so use the same wording as the personnel. So you want to, go ahead, Ms. Gonzalez, let's finish this.
Only thing I add is that if we do that, there needs to be homework before the next, done and completed before the next disciplinary hearing to make the process match what we just approved.
That's right. Yeah, I agree. All right, so. You, this is a, a recommendation to amend the motion. So let's get this finished now. Let's read the amended motion. I, I like what you said, Ms. Gonzalez. Go ahead and repeat it.
Um. I. Well, I'm kind of confused. I move, I move to amend the minutes from the.
No.
I'm kind of confused. No, we're not. Just the.
No, no, the statement. You were only talking about the statement you just gave.
The statement would be, I move that we. I move that we approve the disciplinary actions as discussed.
All right, is, do you accept that amendment?
Yes.
All right, do we have a second for the amendment?
I second.
All right, any further discussion? Let's move forward.
Yeah, I think we're all thoroughly confused. That's why I was moving to, uh, put this off so we could.
Let's get this finished. We're right at the end, all right?
It's not even, okay, I just want to say that, I think we conflated several things.
Last point, Mr. Rolls, go ahead.
So I agree with what you're saying, Mrs. Gonzalez. That's how we should say it. We should change our template for the hearing to read that way. But we're, this whole thing just got started talking about minutes, so that's different. And so that's what we need to understand too. So I don't even know where this motion is right now, but this is the part that we have to capture going forward. It's maybe just more of a comment, uh, for.
This is a sentence that's going to be added when we go to a hearing.
But this all started talking about the minutes.
To the minutes. We're going to add that sentence to the minutes.
We're going to say that statement, and then what has to be recorded in the minutes is that, quote that motion, and then you have to record the vote. So, as long as we all understand that.
I don't understand what you just said.
I agree with Mr. Rolls. As ironic as it may be.
Please translate, thank you.
I, I think we need to rescind this motion, take it off the table altogether, table it. And at maybe the next meeting.
Make a motion, second.
Make, to revisit the hearing process to capture that. It's not really that complicated. We're making it very complicated. I was looking for the language.
Right now, we have an amended motion. And, um, it was seconded. So if you want to do that, let's vote on this motion first, and you can vote it down if you wish. So we have a, a motion. That basically, if I can read it as I understand it, because it's basically the same thing as we're saying about personnel. And that is that, um, we have a motion to approve the action that was discussed in closed, or discussed as presented in closed session. All right?
Yes.
Okay, so we've already had discussion about it. All those in favor, let's say a vote. Give a vote with this individual vote. How many want to approve to add that to the minutes? I mean, it's good to add that to the minutes of a special closed session disciplinary hearing. Ms. Gonzalez, yea or nay?
Nay.
Ms. Hawk?
Nay.
Nay.
That, is that three nays? I couldn't hear.
It was nay.
Nay.
Yay, nay. Do we have two noes and one yes?
Nay.
Uh, I also vote yes. Motion does not carry.
Also yes.
So we will, uh, postpone this discussion and, uh, continue it, and all of us, let's do a little more research, and if it does require the meeting with the lawyer, we'll all do it together in, um. I don't know whether this needs to be a closed session or not. I really don't think it does because we're talking about procedure. And, uh, we'll look at that for the next meeting. All right, let's move on. Sorry to those watching that that took so long. All right, um, discussion items. We have, uh, the invocation, um, policy. If you would go to, um, the agenda. And you look at the, um. Invocation, it's a file. And this was, uh, um, requested that we bring this to order, that we change the agenda. Um, for the board meetings to include an invocation. If you look at the example that is in your board packet. It has call to order, then invocation, and then the rest of it is just like we've been doing, the pledge, moment of silence, et cetera. So. This is a discussion item. It would be nice if it was an action item, but let's look at it. Obviously, um, I apologize, last time I did, uh, say a prayer at the beginning, and, um, we probably should have had this discussion first, so I apologize. So we're having it now. So I would personally, um, but let's discuss it, and then I'll be looking for a possible motion of having an invocation prayer right after we call the meeting to order. Discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, to tag on to our previous conversation, I would like to seek a legal opinion on including an invocation in a public school, school board meeting. Um, and so in the spirit of our previous conversation, it sounds like we should have that conversation as a board. Um, with perhaps Mr. King.
Other thoughts?
That might be an opportunity to bundle it with anything else that we need to ask legally to, just be for efficiency, to tip the hat to Ms. Hawk to make the most of her dollars.
The other discussion?
I, I think that an invocation is probably legal, and, and I'm just speaking off the top of my head, because certainly other meetings, both in our counties and other areas, uh, have. I, I think that an invocation is probably legal and I'm just speaking off the top of my head because certainly other meetings, both in our counties and other areas have an invocation, as does the US Congress. I, I think perhaps it boils down to the personal opinions of the, the current board, whether they want to continue that. And I frankly think it ought to be just a consensus vote of whether we, we five wish to do that or not.
Ms. Hoover?
I agree with Ms. Hock.
Yeah, I was the one, and I tend to agree also, that in, there are divisions who do have an invocation prayer. There's many other board and entities throughout Virginia that have prayers. The real problem obviously is the prayer in a school. That is another issue. The school board is not during the school day. It is not leading students and I think, I agree with Ms. Monahan, I think. I agree with Ms. Hock that I believe it's a decision that we can make as a board. And I have not read anything in the Constitution or in current practices and our government that disallows an invocation prayer at the beginning of a board meeting. So rather than, I don't disagree with talking about the other instance with Dr. King, but I would like to possibly make a motion with this one. And if I don't have one, I'll make one myself so that we can move on with this.
One more statement.
All right.
Mr. Bush. So I agree with that, that we don't necessarily, we don't need legal counsel on this. But, so I'd be fine with voting changes form, but what I would also want to do and be my personal preference actually was talking to a lawyer for free, Ms. Hock, about this, I thought it might be legally preferable, but I don't know if it's legally necessary. But I prefer to do it a certain way here, just to involve the community because I think involving our, our faith leaders is very important. I mean, our, our students go to their churches Saturday, Sunday, whenever, and it's part of their life. And I think involving the community as much here as possible is, be good. So I would also want to come back next time and perhaps have a protocol change where we rotate. Does each of us have been voted by, into the office by our constituents and representing their values? And so we take turns inviting someone from the community to lead us an invocation each meeting. This would be my preference about how to do it.
Well, that's, that goes into the hows, let's just.
Right, I'm just throwing that out there, it doesn't necessarily affect.
And I, and I, we can discuss that more, but right now, it's just the fact of, if I could have a motion and if I don't, I'll make it, that we have an invocation prayer at the beginning after we call the meeting to order.
I, I think another point that's very important to me is that if we do have an invocation prayer, that it, that it be appropriate for all the religions which are represented in our county, which includes Jewish, Jewish, Protestant, Catholic, Muslim, Islam, I'm sorry. And so that would, that would just be very important, I think, to be representative and diverse.
Okay, that's more again about the how-tos and we can discuss that further.
I'd make a motion.
All right, go ahead.
I, I move that we update file BDDC-F1 to reflect that we will have an invocation in our meetings.
I second.
Did I hear a second?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover seconded it. Any more discussion? And again, we can talk about the how-tos. Repeat the motion, please.
I move that we add an invocation to our template agenda on file BDDC-F1. That's presented.
And it was seconded by Ms. Hoover. Any further discussion? Again, we can talk about the how-tos later on. All right, I'll, I'll go ahead, Ms.
May I ask Dr. Boyd's opinion on the matter?
Yeah, absolutely. Dr. Wright and I, we both dug into this a little deeper as we saw it on the agenda. And we did take a look at some of the information that's available online and in other places concerning prayer and invocations. I'll just read a quick excerpt that I thought was, was rather telling and interesting. The US Supreme Court dealt with the issue recently in Town of Greece versus Galloway, 2014. So if you wanted to look up that court case, again, it's Town of Greece versus Galloway. And the court ruled that starting local government meetings with a prayer does not violate the Establishment Clause of the US Constitution. So there's some other information there. It also goes on there, it speaks a little bit about what Ms. Hock spoke about, the non-sectarian approach to it, making sure that everyone's included. But it certainly addresses the, the issue of whether or not it's allowed and it mentions it does not violate the Establishment Clause. So, so given that legal information, I certainly would not be opposed to it.
Any further discussion? All right, let's take an individual vote on this. I will start with Ms. Gonzalez.
Nay.
Nay.
Yay.
Ms. Rolls?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries three to two. invocation will be added. We will discuss the how-tos at future meetings. All right, next agenda item. The policy of admission of non-public students for part-time enrollment. Mr., Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity. So at last school board meeting, just to get our public up to speed, we took a look and had a brief conversation in our, in our discussion session about the admission of non-public students for part-time enrollment. That's our policy J E C B. Currently, as that policy is written, we have an enrollment section. That's the, the section really that's of conversation this evening. And that policy currently reads that students must enroll in at least one academic class or one instructional unit, class on the high school level, instructional unit on the elementary and middle school level, more than the requested courses and for each extracurricular or club activity in which they choose to participate. So what that means in layman's terms is if a non-public school student wants to take a course, then the school division is responsible per policy to choose an additional course for that student to take within that time period. So what I did is I went back and took a look. We, we talked about this at our last meeting. We talked about a number of considerations like financial considerations, capacity considerations and things of that nature. We did have the opportunity, it is the summertime, so we had the opportunity to take a deep dive into this policy. We spoke with a number of individuals at the Virginia Department of Education. We also spent some time in the school board office talking about some of the logistics to our current policy. So just to give you an update, we were concerned a little bit about making sure that we had the available resources to support students that attended, non-public school students that attended the public school. So I spoke with the Department of Education. The, the Department of Education does recognize students that are on quarter time and halftime basis. And they also recognize the number of days that those students are in attendance. So they do provide funding for public schools on a per diem basis, based on the number of courses that student takes and also on the number of days that the students are in attendance. So I went and took a look at some other policies that are available across the state. And I know that we were interested in seeing if we could get something in place by the beginning of the school year so that our non-public school students could possibly attend some public school classes. So I did go ahead and provide a draft revision to the policy. So if you turn through your board packet, you'll see a draft revision to policy J E C B. And I just wanted to draw your attention to the enrollment section. The only difference in the policy is the enrollment section. And if, and if you wouldn't mind, I'll just read that quickly. It says, students must enroll in at least one academic class, high school, or one instructional unit, elementary or middle school. Students may enroll in up to the amount of classes to equal halftime status or less. So that's two classes a semester at the high school. Students wishing to participate in an academic class must be qualified to do so and shall have completed all prerequisite coursework or the equivalent required of full-time public school students wishing to enroll in the course. In other words, they've met the prerequisites. In addition, the students must satisfy the same criteria for participation and activities, including any tryouts or selection process required for full-time students. So this has to do with extracurricular activities and following the same expectations we have for public school students as far as trying out physicals, things of that nature. The part-time enrollment and continued enrollment of the student who enrolls in school per this policy is dependent on, but not limited to, the following factors. Space and program availability. So in other words, we need to make sure that we have the available seat in the classroom for that non-public school student to occupy. The, the need for hiring additional staff. So in other words, when we go into a particular year, we would not be hiring additional staff to satisfy non-public school students. We would, we would allow these students to occupy seats that currently exist within the public school. The cost of any needed additional services. And the discipline area, the disciplinary record of the student would all be considered. If part-time enrollment causes the total enrollment in the class or grade level to exceed the maximum allowed by the state or the local policy, admission would be denied. In other words, we don't have capacity, similar to a, a, a public school student right now wanting to enter a, a theater course and, and there not being available seats. The master schedule of the school shall not be altered solely to accommodate such part-time basis. So again, we go into a new school year crafting a master schedule based on student needs. So at the time of, of crafting the master schedule, all of the needs that we are aware of, we build the master schedule around. So for example, if we have 350 students that need to take English nine, we create enough sections of English nine for that many students. And of course, it's not that exact number. There's always some, some carryover. So that, so the master schedule would not be adjusted to make up this difference for non-public school enrollment. Students admitted under this policy must meet all admission requirements to the public school, including immunizations required of full-time students. Students may not enroll after the first week of a course unless extenuating circumstances exist in which the principal would be the final determining factor about concerning that. Once enrolled, the student shall comply with behavioral disciplinary attendance and/or other rules applicable to all students, including rules governing the use of the division's computer systems. If a student fails to comply, the school may withhold credit and/or terminate the student's participation in, in addition to taking any disciplinary action that would be taken against a full-time student for similar conduct. So again, that's the only change to the policy that is strictly in the enrollment section. The major change there is we would no longer have the policy where we would assign an additional class or create an additional responsibility of that, of that non-public school student. They would be able to enroll with the same expectations that our public school students have and they would be able to take a, a single course, for that matter, within the public school. So I'll stop there and answer any questions that board members may have.
Okay, questions? I know we discussed this quite a lot at the last board meeting.
I do have to.
Go ahead.
So first of all, I'll say, Dr. Boyd, thank you so much for diving deep and getting this out quickly because I'll see whether we had something we could approve tonight. It's a big impact for people who want to engage in this semester starting in August. So I guess first, most important question about this, do you have any, given that there are so many safety valves here as far as if we don't have space, then we don't take them? Do you have any concerns about us approving this tonight and taking students starting in August?
No, I think if we approve this tonight, we would be ready to take students in August.
Okay, great. You know, so the other things are just maybe for, I would be for that, but these are things that perhaps we maybe tweak later. I'm just wondering about the previous policy said more about extracurriculars. I think it limited extracurriculars to the number of classes you took. So if you're taking one class, you can only do one extracurricular. And I see it's omitted, so is that intentional?
I, I don't see any reason to, to limit it to, to one. If they're taking a class, it, again, I think what we're trying to do here is make this as equitable as it is for, for non-public school students as it is for public school students. So if a public school student is, is enrolled in school and taking courses, the same expectation would exist for non-public school students as far as extracurricular activities are concerned.
Sounds good to me.
But it is, excuse me if I may interject, but there are some very clear guidelines with the Athletic Association for Virginia.
Yes.
Concerning some of those participation.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Bush. So again, the Virginia High School League is the umbrella organization that over, that is over top of all, of public high schools and public schools in Virginia. They have a handbook that's very lengthy, but as far as eligibility for participation in extracurricular activities through VHSL, there is certain enrollment requirements. For example, even a public school student right now that intends to participate in VHSL activities has to be enrolled in three courses. So in order for any student, non-public school or public school student to be a member of a VHSL team and participate in VHSL competition, they, they would still have to take three courses. Now, any non-VHSL activity, those same stipulations would, would not be the case. Some that come to mind are, I say theater, that's often a popular one, but there's also a VHSL one-act theater competition. Which they would not be eligible for. So not to muddy the waters, but there are some extracurricular activities that are not under the VHSL umbrella, which they could participate in, just like a public school student could. But without being enrolled in three courses full-time, they would not be able to participate in VHSL activities as the policy current, exists, currently exists through VHSL.
Right, which you did discuss last time. Any other questions?
Mr. Bush, I, I think we might also clarify that the VHSL does not extend down to the elementary level. So that many of those activities, the garden club, the chess clubs, the running clubs, et cetera, et cetera, certainly would be available to the, to the, that student. The other point is that the transportation issue has not, the transportation fact has not changed in that the children are, the transportation is the responsibility of the parents to transport those children.
Yes. And, and that is in, I, I don't mind mentioning that there's a sentence in there for transportation. The parents of the children for whom part-time admission is sought are responsible for the transportation of the child to and from school, including any expenses incident there, thereto.
Any further questions? I have one, nobody else. Obviously, we're primarily talking about high school classes. What about, will this also include the middle school classes?
Yes, this is, this is middle school and elementary school as well.
Okay, so elementary school, I'm curious how that, what that would look like.
So in elementary school, they split up their, their day in instructional units. So an instructional unit would be language arts, an instructional unit would be mathematics, history, science. And so one instructional unit on the elementary school level would be a, a non-public school student coming in for the science block and then leaving after the science block.
And we've certainly had that in the past.
Yeah, I'm just clarifying because elementary, it's, it changes how that would be done. All right, any further questions?
Yes, a final point.
Go ahead.
So Dr. Boyd, in, in there, you changed it so that, mentioned not hiring an additional teacher or changed the master schedule. But just to clarify, that does not mean that after we approve this, that we won't look at what the demand signal is and if there's enough students looking for part-time enrollment, we're going to, we're going to use it to adjust our ADM that we expect each year. And so we will employ the number of people needed to meet that demand.
If we certainly have enough information on the front end, we would, yeah, we would make those adjustments based on our ADM in the moment. And, and these students, as I described a minute ago, would be part of our ADM on whatever per diem amount of time that they are within enrollment. So they would be part of the conversation moving forward for funding and other things of that nature. Now, last year, we, we only had one student that, that took two classes. I don't mind saying, and I hope everybody hears, we are opening our doors and want everybody, public school, non-public school students, anyone that wants to come and experience what King George County Schools has to offer. We are certainly willing and wanting to, to make sure that we welcome them with open arms and figure out how to, to accommodate them and, and hopefully this pos, this policy change reflects that.
Much appreciate, Dr. Boyd.
Good.
I'm ready to make a motion unless somebody else has anything else.
Any further questions before we? All right, you have a motion, Stroll?
Yeah, I move that we accept the draft version of policy J E C B as presented.
I second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries, outstanding. All right, policy J F G, model search and seizure.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So again, we've, we've had an opportunity to take a deep look into this policy. If you remember, last spring, we spent a lot of time really putting some components of this policy into practice. So if you take a look at file J F G, I did provide some brief revisions. A lot of it doesn't really change our practice per se. Our practice is. Our practices remain the same, cause as I checked out some of our search and seizure uh practices uh compared to other school divisions, we're, we're very similar across the state. Uh, but we did have a lot of questions last spring uh with our search and seizure policy. So what I tried to do in revising the policy is take a look at a lot of other policies across the state as it, as it pertains to search and seizure. And I just made some minor revisions uh for the board's review this evening. If you take a look, I think yours is highlighted in, hopefully it's highlighted in yellow. But in the first paragraph, we just included the phrase uh at the end of that first sent, or not even at the end of that first sentence, before that uh first comma, uh, that, that, uh, you know, unreasonable search and seizure is guaranteed by the Fourth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. We added that section there, or just that statement, excuse me. And then if you look below at the bottom of the first page, we included, uh, as some other school divisions have as well, the um threshold that we need to reach in order to initiate a lawful search. So uh, again, we had some conversation about this, not to dig that back up. But if I could just read it quickly, to initiate a lawful search, a school official, not a school resource officer, a school official, must have reasonable grounds to believe that number, or bullet point one, a law or school rule has been broken. Secondly, a particular student has committed a violation or infraction. Thirdly, the suspected violation or infraction is of a kind for which there will be physical evidence. And finally, the sought-after evidence would be found in a particular place associated with the student suspected of committing the violation or infraction. So I included that, that was a, a topic of many uh questions in the spring. If you turn the page, uh, you'll see that our current policy J F G includes the, the following statement. A, a personal search may include requiring a student uh to be scanned with a metal detector. That's in our current policy. Uh, I just included their uh student or the student's belongings to include backpacks. Uh, and then finally, on the last page, many school divisions in the Commonwealth have uh statements in their search and seizure policy to differentiate between school resource officers and school security officers. Uh, so again, just to remind us all, school, school resource officers are employees of the King George County Sheriff's Department uh and, and need to have a higher threshold in order to commit a search. Uh, school security officers are employees of the school division. And just like school administration, need to have reasonable cause or uh reasonable suspicion in order to conduct a search. Uh, so as, as we know, this year, we will have a school security officer at King George High School uh that we, that we've gained through the grant. Uh, so I added the section on uh that you can see there, searches involving law enforcement and security officers. So that reads for our public quickly. Uh, school resource officers may be present at student searches, but do not typically conduct the search. As sworn law enforcement officers, S R Os must have a probable cause to search an individual student, whereas school officials are only required to demonstrate reasonable suspicion. King George County Schools employs school security officers to perform school security functions who are school officials and are not sworn law enforcement officers. S S Os by definition may conduct a search with reasonable suspicion. However, they should be trained in appropriate search procedures and knowledgeable of laws and policies that govern student searches. So I can stop and pause there. Those are the revisions that uh I would suggest uh for your preview uh this evening.
Um, one comment, shouldn't um that first bullet in the first sentence says to initiate a lawful search, a school official must have reasonable grounds to believe that a law or school rule has been or, just add the word or, is being broken?
Has been.
Or is being.
Or is being broken.
Shouldn't, just grammar wise, I don't know.
Yeah.
Or put a slash.
Yeah, yeah.
Either one, a slash or put or, one of the two. Um, any uh questions? If we could move this to a motion, I think it would be good, but it's um, what's the will of the board? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to um approve filed policy J F G as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, thank you. All right, next one, the uh policy manual update regarding the student fees, fines and charges.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, so every year at this time, uh, we have the uh responsibility of taking a look at our file J N. This file is titled Student Fees, Fines and Charges. And uh, it is required that the school board approve uh this file J N and any changes that are involved. So uh, you do have that in your board packet. I won't go through all those changes, but if there are any questions to those, I, I'm certainly uh able to answer.
Any questions? I think this is pretty standard.
Yes.
So I see the reduced fee lunches went from a nominal amount down to free. Is that uh dictated by federal funding?
Federal funding.
Okay, so no additional cost for us?
No additional cost to the county.
And then I also see that summer school is crossed out, so we're no longer charging for that, or does that mean?
Yeah, so I, I did speak with our instructional staff. We have not charged uh for, for summer school uh in some time. When we did have this fee in, it was because, let me back up. All of our summer school now is for credit recovery. So it's for students uh that are repeating a course. Um, we did have a time, particularly when it pertained to Algebra One, where students were given the opportunity to come take that course for the first time. And that's when we charged. Uh, but right now, we have a budget um that includes funding to cover all of the expenses associated with credit recovery for summer school. So we no, no longer need to have the fee.
Any other further questions? I think this is pretty standard, if I could have a motion.
I move to approve filed J N.
Did you get that, Ms. Rinko? Yes. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, capital improvement plan.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, so in your packet, again, you'll, you will have draft version number one of our five and ten-year capital improvement plan. Uh, we did spend some time this summer with our maintenance departments uh and our technology department, who are our two biggest departments as it pertains to capital improvement projects. And um, this was a really challenging endeavor, because it involves a lot of speculation as far as where the school division, where the county, uh, and, and where our facilities may be in the next five and, and ten years. Uh, we even tried to stretch it out as far as fifteen, uh, but we really started to question uh, our reliability when it came to stretching that far. Uh, again, this is the first draft of this for your preview. It does not take a motion or anything of that nature. Uh, but I would appreciate the board members' eyes on this and, and, and any suggestions or, or, or added um items that you think uh would be of importance to add to this list within the next uh five and ten years. We did, uh, you, you will see the fourth elementary school right now on this. You will not yet see the, the school board office on this. Uh, I can certainly add that, that, that's been a topic of conversation in our community right now. Uh, because of the desire to retire that building, that, that entire building, not just the preschool, but the entire uh building that uh the preschool and the school board office occupies at the moment. Uh, so that's certainly something that we can add on the list. And down the road, uh, as we know, our schools are at tipping points. Our, our, our high school, for example, uh, is at fifteen hundred and the building was built uh for fifteen hundred. Uh, so there is not a new high school on this list yet, but that's certainly something that could be included on the list as well, uh, as we move on. So again, within the next five or ten years, you'll see things on this list that include replacements of roofs, uh, air handlers, things that we know have an expiration date, that I know uh the board and, and the board of supervisors are interested in and planning for. But then there's also things that we can have that conversations about, about where we see our community heading and what we need to consider as far as growth and, and additional uh buildings and, and schools within our school division. So I can pause there for any questions.
Questions?
Mr. Bush, I, um, there, there's one item that uh is, is so inconsequential. And yet, I, I do think we need to do something about it. And that's the old King George Middle School sign at the old King George Middle School building. That's no longer ours, but belongs to the county, but it still says that it's the King George Middle School. Um, I think that needs to come down. I'd be glad to go take a hammer to it, but that's not the best way. So I think it should be added to the list.
Yes, ma'am.
And maybe the county needs to take, but it was ours, I think it needs to be removed.
I um reached out to the P T A president at the middle school, because the sign actually belongs to the King George Middle School P T A. And uh, I was part of that fundraising event way back when. And um, well, well, we asked, I asked her to please check with uh Dr. Nice and see if he was interested in having it for any purpose, since it does belong to, but I never heard back. So maybe you could ask.
I can certainly reach out to the county. I can reach out to Mr. Miller. They, they own the property now, but I'm, I'm, don't wanna speak for them, but I'm sure they wouldn't mind us. Uh, there's been a lot of discussion about what to do with that building. And, and I can't say that um saving much uh right now is part of the conversation. So I wouldn't imagine they would have any difficulty with us wanting to uh maybe restore and keep and, and uh, you know, display somewhere the, the former middle school sign. So I, I'll certainly look into it.
I can say that um, uh, one of the board supervisors members and myself, we walked all of that old middle school. In fact, we were four hours. Um, and that a lot of the materials, this is kind of a sidebar to this, but a lot of the things that are actually located inside of the old middle school are ours. Um, and a lot are board supervisors. And um, so, but there's a ongoing discussion about how to deal with some of those things. Dr. Boyd and myself, and then also um Mr. Granger and uh several of the board supervisors. And I've been talking about getting in there and trying to salvage what we can and so on. It's, it's not an easy kind of process.
No, it isn't.
There's a lot there.
And the same, the same kind of statement could be made about the old school board office.
Yes.
Um, you know, we could go on some tours of, of the upper echelons of that area and probably find all kinds of things, uh, which we have done in the past and cleaned out, but it, there's still stuff in those other back buildings.
I think this is a beginning first step in the long term, and I really appreciate it, Dr. Boyd. I know as a board, we requested this back, I don't know, six, eight months ago, whatever. And so thank you for coming, and I know that it will be added to and prioritized, and money's an issue. And we've been talking about a lot of the funds that um the school had that we didn't use this year. Does it go back to board of supervisors? Do we get it? Just want you to know, those conversations are going on. Nothing to vote on yet, but they are going on. And hopefully, some of these things, we may even be able to get to this year if we can work out some funds. But we'll see, I just wanted the rest of the board to know. And also, this is a, a list that's gonna be continually updated, changed, prioritized and so on. Because I noticed that, like you said about the high school, I noticed that when Ms. Hoover and I visited the high school, we heard the same thing that you just mentioned, that within a very short years, there's not gonna be enough room. And the i, and the idea of moving portables into the high school is not a pleasant idea. So the um, there's a lot that needs to be considered in that ten, fifteen year uh down the way. Possibly even another high school or adding on or whatever, those are big discussions. But thank you for getting this processed.
Absolutely, this will be a fluid list and, and we'll continue to add any suggestions that board members may have. And the last thing I'd like to include is uh after you guys take a good, healthy look at it, then we'd like to post it on the King George County Schools webpage and uh make sure that it's available to our public as well.
All right, good.
Okay, I also have a comment, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Roll.
My, I go, thanks for extending the set, where I think it's very beneficial for us to look farther out than the five years that we've been doing. And to me, it's a little bit alarming that we are already at capacity for high school and we haven't really presented plans yet or, you know, board supervisors hasn't had, offered any money to start building that. It's, that's a process to get a new high school. So if we're already at capacity, that's, that's concerning for sure. So I, I guess I didn't quite track why we don't have the high school and the school board office listed on this at this point.
We, we certainly can, there, there's a lot of, it, it, I, I think, if you take a look at the growth in our community, it, it looks relatively gradual for the last, I don't know how long, twenty-some years. Uh, so are there things that we can do in our school division within the next five, ten years uh to, to manage that gradual growth? If, again, this is speculation, uh, if, if it continues in that manner, uh, there are things that we can do. With that being said, I mean, we're all, you know, aware that neighborhoods like Hopyard and Oakwood Estates and many other development projects in our community are, are, I think, gonna, you know, have our community grow at a rather exponential rate. So um, if it's the desire of the board, uh, I, I certainly see within the next ten years and, and I, I, the need, I, I'll say at least the need for a new, for a new school. Uh, I know that that's a, that's a challenging thing to bite off and, and chew on. And I, and I know the reason I hesitate a little bit, because uh after being in this school division for about a decade, I know the conversations that led up to the building of King George High School as it currently exists was no small task. Uh, and, and I, I see Ms. Hawk over there, I know she was part of many of those conversations. Uh, so I know, uh, or at least I have an idea of, of all of the complexities that led up to that conversation. So um, the need will exist, uh, how, how we get there will certainly be uh for all of us to decide moving into the future.
Any other comments, question, yes, Ms. Gonzalez?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, so I guess uh this is maybe a question for Dr. Boyd. So in the ten-year, well, in either, either of them, for the technology um department. So I know there have been discussions about like provide, so you know, we, we have our Chromebook initiative that's, you know, looking to get everybody one-to-one from a Chromebook perspective. Um, and I know there, you know, there's the, the continual refresh of devices so that they don't meet, that they're not, you know, you know, hobbled by their end-of-life um time. But so I know we've been trying to move some teachers, you know, provide laptops um versus Chromebooks, you know, due to increased capacity and, you know, ability from a functional standpoint for your I T devices. Um, I recall at the May, I think it was the May twenty-fourth meeting, the STEM Club came and they spoke, and we're talking about some of their limitations. One that they mentioned was needing better computers to be able to develop code. So we talk about preparing our students for the future workforce, for the future, you know, the future world, right? Um, I worry that our Chromebook initiative, like, you know, Chromebooks are better than maybe no device. Um, again, I'm not a, and not that any device is better than a teacher, right? But so we are, we do wanna make sure our students are prepared. And so I know, you know, if you look at uh refreshing, you know, if you, if you were to refresh some computer, replace Chromebooks and, you know, incrementally with laptops, then you'd have a mixed population. I wonder if, considering that from a SIP perspective, to at some point in time, like say, provide the high school with laptops to like get the game, you know, the ball rolling, that'd be a much, we already have challenges from a local funding perspective with a lot of that. Um, and that would be a big dot, high price tag um effort. So I don't know, anyway, if there's been any thoughts about.
You're absolutely right, yeah. So taking a look at, at increasing the capacity of our, our computers for our students and for our staff is some, certainly something that will take back to the technology department. It's, it's, we are in a phase right now with uh Chromebooks like we are with textbooks where um, I think we call it refresh usually. So we're usually taking a certain percentage of Chromebooks, cycling them out now and then cycling in a new set. Through that process, I wanna say it takes, you know, somewhere in the ballpark of about four or five years to, to go through the entire cycle. So I'll, I'll make sure that I, I, I speak with our technology department and talk about how to increase some of the capacity we have and what those costs may look like moving forward.
Those are some excellent ideas. I really appreciate your response and also the concern, cause I agree with you, Ms. Gonzalez. But is that a C I P issue or not really?
It's, it's a C I P issue if it, if it uh is over fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I knew that.
Yeah, so um.
Could be, that's all.
And, and we do, and the other thing that's um fifty thousand dollars of, of county funds, uh, a, a lot of technology can come through grant funds as well. So, so we, we continue to explore those options and, and try to employ those as often as we can.
Good, thank you very much. All right, let's move on. And I'm sure we'll have kind of regular, you're gonna, you're gonna post this publicly so everybody can see it. Um, I guess as, if you post this publicly, my first thought is that everybody's gonna start sending things. Well, could you add this? Could you think about this? So um, that will probably wane after a while, but in the beginning, you will probably get a lot of comments about things that could be changed, which is not necessarily bad. It's input from the community, just that hopefully the community knows we're not gonna add everything that everybody talks about.
Yeah, I think that's a good thing.
All right, um, committee reports. Um, we'll start with Mr. Rolls this time.
None.
Ms. Gonzalez?
I have none.
None.
I have none.
And the summer, it's unlikely that we would, and I also have none. All right, superintendent's report.
So again, I just wanted to. So again, I just wanted to um, first, uh, formally introduce uh, Dr. Troy Wright. Troy is up here to the left and I am so happy to introduce him to King George County through schools at a, I guess the first school board meeting. He's in attendance. Uh, it, it's such a, a, a welcome uh, feeling to have somebody in the office across from me now. Uh, we've already worked together on a, a few things and will continue to, to grow together and learn uh, from each other. I've already learned a lot of things from Dr. Wright uh, and some of the things that he employed at Riverbend High School and in Spotsylvania County. And uh, as we begin to roll into the school year and address many of the challenges that exist, not just here in King George County, but in public schools across the country, I, I, I'm, I feel just so blessed and, and fortunate to, to have a gentleman of his caliber with us and uh, just wanted to formally introduce him to, to the school board this evening. Huh, welcome.
Dr. Boyd, just in that regard, would you, could you get up and just kind of um, I don't know, get us, so we get to know you just slightly? Is that all right, Dr. Boyd?
I, I don't see why not. We can put him in front of the firing squad.
We won't necessarily ask any questions, but maybe if you could mention a little bit more about yourself.
Certainly, um, I'd just like to thank the board for the opportunity to work in uh, King George and for, for hiring me and approving me. Uh, I'd like to just let you know that uh, while I've, I've been on the job seven days now, it has been, uh, it has been really wonderful. I've had the opportunity to get in all five of the high schools and meet the principals or all five of the schools and meet the principals and their staff. And that has been a, a great, a great time, just wandering the schools and the principals were great. Took me through all the, the different schools. Today I did Potomac and uh, and King George Middle School. And last week I was able to get into all the other schools. So um, I just uh, I'm really embracing um, the community here, uh, the folks and the staff have all been very welcoming. And I certainly am looking forward to continue to work with Dr. Boyd. Uh, it's been a really good uh, connection there. And uh, just looking forward to learning more about King George. So um, excited to work with you as well and get to know the members of, of the board. So thank you for this opportunity.
Well, thank you. On behalf of the school board, we welcome you. We're glad you're here and you are filling a big hole. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Boyd, sorry.
Uh, yes. And then the only other thing I had, uh, as it is the summer months is uh, we are amping up for convocation. So this is a formal invitation to our board members uh, that we will have convocation on uh, Monday, July 31st. Uh, we will begin breakfast at 8:00 AM at the King George High School cafeteria, which you are invited. Uh, and then at 9:00 AM, we will start our uh, opening convocation presentation in the auditorium. And we've got a a great guest speaker this, this year, Mr. Rohan Murphy, uh, which I think is going to embody the theme that we have this year, which the theme this year is determination. Uh, it's the I'm Determined theme uh, going into this school year. There's a lot of challenges in public education and we're really hoping that we can arm our teachers with, with the desire for determination and making sure that we can fight through some, many of these challenges, both individually and collectively. So I think we have a great presentation planned and really look forward to everyone's attendance at that event.
Thank you. That, is that it?
That's it. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, board comments. Um, we'll go to the other side. Ms. Gonzalez?
Um, I don't have any prepared comments today. So, thank you. But welcome. Uh, Dr. Wright, we're very excited to have you. So we look forward to working with you.
Ms. Hawk?
Yes, I, I have just a couple of comments uh, with our being on the brink of opening schools. I want, I really want to tell uh, Ms. Yuzersky and Ms. Gordon how much we appreciate your efforts. We are, I think we're ready from what folks say and from what I observed uh, the other day at the school board office during orientation of new teachers, that they are eager, they're uh, a real variety of uh, interest and, and efforts and uh, I, it has not been an easy year, folks. Let me tell you, Ms. Yuzersky and Ms. Gordon and their staff have been working pretty not, pretty much non-stop, I think. So I, just a, a big thank you to your staff, Ms. Yuzersky. Um, and I also want to say, you know, every, sometimes things get lost in the paper and these days much of King George doesn't get the Freelance Star anymore. So uh, it, it comes out digitally and at any rate, um, the uh, athlete of the year is always a big deal for our students and their families. And uh, that athlete was chosen, but um, we had some runners-up from King George that were named, and I want to give them some special congratula- congratulations. Uh, Max Lipinski uh, is one of the runners-up for uh, at the Freelance Star Athlete of the Year. Uh, and Max was a junior punter on the football team. And uh, the second was Mackay White, who was a junior football and basketball player. And we want to uh, tell them that we're looking forward to their being involved again and, and uh, being back next year and, and looking forward to our athletics getting started. I know band camp is going on this week, so that's getting ready to go and um, uh, so many other activities are already underway. Um, I know our, our wrestlers are getting ready and their coaches are working. Um, and I, I, I wanted to say that, you know, it does seem like the, the summer goes quickly. Uh, but for, for some children and, and some families, it's really good news for school to be opening again. Uh, sometimes the activities and um, the support and the nourishment are, are really important to families. So school can really be, you know, a, a full year involvement whether or not kids are in class. Um, the other thing, just in terms of thinking for the future, um, one of my concerns and I'm seeing more and more uh, written about um, chronic absenteeism in, in the nation. And um, you know, since uh, my, my old dear love was fluency originally, I, I want us to really start looking at and paying attention to what's happening early on with our students this year. And we, we have a lot of youngsters that um, sort of got lost during COVID. I mean, we, we, we certainly have Jeff Smith who works very hard, but it's really tough for one person to be doing all that needs to be done to support that effort. So I'm looking forward to maybe seeing what other divisions are doing and, and what we can do to improve that.
I would just say, uh, welcome to Dr. Wright. Look forward to uh, seeing you around.
Mr. Rolles?
I also want to welcome Dr. Wright. It's great to have you with us. And uh, I'll mention now that I will not be able to attend the next school board meeting in person. It'll be at best, it'll be remote if I, I can make it at all, but hopefully I can participate remotely. Also say, I've mentioned before that I've joined the SBMA, the School Board Member Alliance. And I mentioned what a good deal that was, just $250 and they've been putting out a lot of really great content lately, some trainings where, you know, VSB, we pay our membership fee, but then if we want to do training, there's additional cost for that. These are all included in that membership fee. So there's a few coming up. I'll tell you about them. And then if you're interested, let me know and I can give you information about joining if you're, if you'd like. So just tomorrow, there's a tips on writing good policy training, which unfortunately I won't be able to attend. And of course, I've shared before that I know we use the policy service for VSB and that's, that's great help to make things easier for us, but it has concerned me looking that, at the fact that we only have about six policies in our entire policy book that we've altered it all from the VSB model policies. And I think it's important that we are taking our constituents' input and tailoring these to their needs and their values. It's not right choosing state level policy. So costs like that, I think it'd be helpful for that, understanding how to do that well. Although, you know, a big win tonight, we, we passed the big policy for the part-time enrollment. So mostly big kudos to Dr. Boyd for making that happen. So I, I'll say I'm encouraged about that. Then July 26th, there's a class about how school board members can track division spending. So in my sophomore year on the board, I'm starting to catch a little bit more, but still something I'm trying to figure out. So I think that's a, a class that'd be good for me to attend. Uh, August 8th is Understanding Closed Session Discussions, Personal Issues Under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. I'm sure you all are dying to hear more about FOIA, so you can get it there. And uh, August 22nd is Critical Considerations for School Board Members Approving K-12 Curriculum. I know if you look at the powers in the, of the school board as listed in the Code of Virginia, curriculum is listed in there. We don't as metaphors talk about curriculum on this board at all. So I think it'd be informative to look at that and get some input about what can be done. You know, and is done elsewhere. I'll see the SOLs or what, or there's our overriding guidance. But so that's it for SBMA and uh, I haven't shared about a book for a while, so I figured I was due. And this one, I've actually read it quite a while ago, but it's kind of timely right now. It's called In Search of Good Government: From the Grand Experiment to the Goochlin Revolution. That's by Ken Peterson down in Goochlin. And um, so when I was running for school board, there were a few folks came up to me and expressed concern that civics isn't being taught like it used to be. And I don't think that comment was directed specifically at King George schools, just American education in general, which I've seen similar things as well. But so it might be something to address eventually, but I figured the best place to start was Biggie Sharam is educated on civics that can be. And this book was particularly good because it's focused on local government and uh, and Goochlin County is just on the road. So very applicable to what we're doing here also, you know, obviously Virginia uh, county. And I think one of the best things about our American system is the fact that we're decentralized. We don't have just one national government crowning one solution down everyone's throat. We can look at our community and see what our community needs are and tell it to that. And so the fact that we can look at Goochlin and see the good things that they're doing and pick what we want, leave what we don't want and help make ourselves better is, is a huge um, opportunity for us. And I'll, so I'll, I'll go ahead and look at the back here, read that for you. It's uh, says government, America is broken and dangerously close to the point of no return. Can it be fixed? Of course it can. Americans have won world wars, split the atom and planted an American flag on the moon. Certainly you can fix a political system of our own creation. In Search of Good Government tells how this was done in one locality, Goochlin County in Virginia. The Goochlin turnaround story provides convincing evidence that an informed and engaged electorate has the power to fix a broken government. And they share a quote from Mark Twain in the back that says patriotism is supporting your country all the time and your government when it deserves it. And on the inside, I talks a lot about the solution being focusing on the original intent of both the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence. And um, how self-governing citizens will be served best by doing that. So it tells a story about how in 2011, all the school board members were voted out of office and only one incumbent from the board supervisors retained his office. So in short, they, they cleaned house. And shortly after the new boards took office and shortly after they got in our office, the treasurer was charged, arrested and jailed for embezzlement. So they were, it was a hot mess in Goochlin County. Uh, their water system was massively in debt. Not all their schools were accredited, but a major turnaround was underway. They figured out the debt without raising taxes, even though at one point they thought they'd have to triple them to get out of the, the hole they dug themselves. They got all the schools accredited while also improving the funding to the schools and keeping tax rates low. Now they're running annual budget surpluses. So that's very, it's obviously a very encouraging story. And the, the book also goes on to some very practical uh, steps on how to get those kinds of results. So most relevant to us here in the school board to talk about just the importance of a tight relationship between the board supervisors and the school board. And that's something I'm, like us to be very intentional about here in King George. I know we've been making strides in that direction. I think it's been good in progress. But yeah, it's reading about what they did there, I thought it'd be really good to reach out to Ken Peterson. After I got over the fact that he's a West Point grad, uh, go Air Force, be an army. Uh, so, uh, so I reached out to Mr. Peterson and asked if he'd be willing to meet with us, tell us more about how he helped foster that better relationship between uh, the, the two boards. And it turns, and I wasn't even sure if that's something he did, but it turns out he does do some consulting. And other counties have reached out to him and he's helped them with some training to develop some documents and whatnot. So I'd like to invite him to mediate a meeting between school board and the board supervisors uh, to come up with some norms or traditions that can help us get the relationship that we want between the boards and also create just you know, the expectation, the standard, that's how it's gonna be going forward and it'll be that way for a long time to come. And I think it'd also be great to get together for some strategic uh, planning about uh, capital improvement plan, which we heard some of tonight and uh, any other things that might be of interest to you, perhaps the budget uh, process that we just recently completed. And I would envision that as a half-day offsite between the two boards and maybe the board supervisors would invite him to spend more time with them, since he is a supervisor himself, just finishing his third term. And he'd have some topics that they might want to discuss with him, you know, specifically about just that area. And I think the best bang for our buck would be to invite him to come out in February, certainly after um, the new boards take office in January, since this is an election year. And then we'd have about two years of benefit from getting together and, and talking about these things. I know it is a little bit tricky given that the fact that we are not that bored that would be meeting. Only Mr. Bush and I are not up for reelection this year, so we'll be back next year, but the other three, three seats are up for reelection. But the one thing that simplifies it is that, and why I bring it up now, is that the ballot was set in June. So we know who else can be running for the school board. And in fact, there's only one person running for each of the other three seats. So they're all running unopposed. So we can pretty much tell with 99.99% accuracy who's gonna be on the school board next year. Uh, so we got, I mean, it's public information, it's all this nonsense. So Ms. Hoover is running for her seat again, you know, of course, uh, uh, Ed Frank is running for that large, and then Dogon District is Colleen Davis. And I've talked to all those people and they're all 100% on board with doing this. They want to start doing some strategic planning to uh, look forward and serve our constituents as fast as we can now and well into the future. Just one item of concern that uh, Mr. Bush brought, all this mentioned, that it would be potential discussion later is whether or not, you know, Ken Peterson is definitely the person that we'd want to hire to mediate, but that can be discussed later. And so my thinking is that, so it sounds like the school board's pretty much on board. And we, and there's only so many candidates for the board supervisors as well. And if we can, if we talk to all them, I mean, these are all one-on-one conversations so that it's all totally fine with, you know, FOIA and all that. If the vast majority of everyone's on board, that we can start making some tentative plans to make this happen, because if we wait until January when the boards take office, that's not gonna be enough time to make something happen in February. And I think if we wait any longer than February, then we get in the budget season and it's just gonna be too hard to make happen. So I'm just mentioning this now, I'm still just trying to make contact with candidates for the board supervisors to see where they stand. So, but just putting it out there now, so we can start talking, uh, maybe put it as a discussion item at a future meeting if we think it's appropriate. But not ready for that right now until I've been able to talk to more supervisors. I, I've made contact with a few of them. There've been some positive responses, but I haven't gotten a response from enough of them to really comment on where they're all at just yet. But so that's, that's something I'm working on. And again, not a discussion item for now, but maybe for the future. That's all the comments I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Rolles. Um, a few things. Um, number one, I'm just um, I'm thankful that um, we did um, add the implication to um, the uh, our agenda items, I guess. Having literally been kicked out of a country for um, yeah, sharing my faith, um, this is pretty important to me. And uh, that we have the freedom in this country to be able to share our faith. And um, whether that's, whatever that faith may be, obviously um, I believe in Almighty God, but um, I just appreciate um, that we live in a country that can, we can do that, that we can still do that. And I hope that we'll continue to do things like that. Um, some other things just to make comments on is I have met with um, uh, Mr. Granger from the Board of Supervisors on two or three occasions, and he is very much in favor of the possibility of us meeting together in February. Um, I think that um, we were kind of further discussions, because I think both of us agreed that, you know, just as Mr. Rolles pointed out, there's gonna be new board members, both in the board of supervisors and the school board. So I think to have a conversation like that um, right now would not be as much value as waiting until February. So I just wanted you to know that um, we're gonna be hearing more about that, Mr. Rolles. Um, I think um, the individual conversations are great. Um, and I think whether we have this Ken Peterson or somebody else, I do think it's good to have a facilitator. It's just a matter of let's um, not necessarily put all of our eggs in one basket. Let's maybe look around for the possibility of other facilitators that might be able to do that. Let's maybe look around for the possibility of other facilitators that might be able to do that. Dr. Wright, thank you for being here, and I look forward to working with you. And I know that Dr. Boyd is so excited that you're here. So we're happy that you are definitely here. Mr. Stats, I just want you to know that you made that comment about having community service, and that, I know I've had several discussions with different people, including Dr. Boyd, about it. There'll probably be something that we'll bring up at a future school board meeting about it. I'm not so sure if something is going to be in stone before this next school year, but I can tell you that the discussions will be going on concerning that, because I come from a background, in at least three of the schools I was in, we had some requirements, whether it was the IB program, which required 160 hours of community service, or some of the other programs I was involved with. In fact, I was the one that was in charge of that IB program, the community service. That was many years ago. And you're right, the value is, is, is very high. And it made a big difference, also makes a big difference getting accepted in certain colleges too, when they can see that. So thank you for your input in that area. There's a possibility that I may also be out, I'm not sure what it's going to do, but just school board members, if you would be making sure, keeping up with the emails, because my son, there's, he's going into some very difficult situations the entire month of August, beginning August the 4th. Right now, I'm planning to be here. I'm just a little bit concerned when I heard today that Mr. Rolls won't be here. He's also got a concern with a family member. Right now, no problem, but just watch the emails, because obviously, I talked to Dr. Boyd a little bit. If we do make a change, we can't, I don't want to make it just the day before. So I will try to keep you informed, but right now, everything is fine. We'll have the board meetings planned on August the 7th. But just, just be aware that that could change, or possibly I'll come in online, which is difficult for the chairman, I know. It's a lot easier for others to come in online, it might be a little tougher for the chair, but we'll see what goes on. Again, I appreciate the presentation about the Heart Association, that's fantastic. And love to see that kind of involvement, especially at the elementary level. That was really something. So I just appreciate that very much. All right, do I have a motion to go into closed session? Pardon? Everybody, I think, didn't everybody give the board comment? Yeah, I didn't miss anybody, Mr. Rolls.
I was looking for the motion. I move that pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3712A of the Code of Virginia that the board convene in a closed meeting to review hires, substitutes, and resignation, and for discussion specifically the evaluation of the division superintendent as permitted under 2.2-37A, 3711A, number one of the Code of Virginia.
I second.
Mr. Roll seconded it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're now in closed session.
as permitted under 2.2-3711A, number one of the Code of Virginia. as permitted under 2.2-3711A, number one of the Code of Virginia. as permitted under 2.2-3711A, number one of the Code of Virginia. of the Code of Virginia, that the board convene in a closed meeting to review hires, substitutes, and resignation, and for discussion specifically the evaluation of the division superintendent
I second. I second. I second.
Mr. Roll, seconded it. All those in favor say aye. Mr. Roll, seconded it. All those in favor say aye. Mr. Roll, seconded it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
as permitted under 2.2-3711A, number one of the Code of Virginia.
Chair votes aye. We're now in closed session. Chair votes aye. We're now in closed session. Chair votes aye. We're now in closed session.
I second.
Mr. Roll, seconded it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're now in closed session.